Okay, welcome everyone. It is, you're welcome. It is now six thirty-seven. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman here. Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Paulan Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight would be Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez, followed by a word of inspiration by Bishop Sylvester Washington from Pleasant Hill Baptist Church.
Please stand.
Mr. Mayor, and to the councilpersons, congratulations upon your reelection, I believe. The first thing I noticed that I want to say to us tonight, so I just kinda missed my page, that David would say to us, "Oh taste and see that the Lord is good." Blessed is the man that trusted in him. He would further say, "He that cometh to me, I will in no wise cast out." Let us pray. Oh wise and eternal God, who has made known to us through your Son Jesus Christ, your loving yet critical concern for the government, the institutions and the relationship of men. And so, Lord, I ask tonight that you grant, as we pause in this moment, hallowed to you, that the spirit of prayer and reverence for your name may prevail in these deliberations, and that this council may be blessed with your aid. I pray, Lord, that their affections may be guided by whatsoever things are true and honest, just and pure, lovely and of a good report. That their understanding may be enlightened by your wisdom, and that their spirits may be empowered by your spirit. So sanctify their thoughts and intentions, their words and actions, that all they do, that all they think, hallelujah, may redound to thy honor and the well-being of our municipality. I pray through him, who is our Lord and Master, Jesus Christ, and amen.
Amen. Thank you Bishop for those blessed words. Thank you for being here tonight. Yes, sir. Alright, we're gonna kick things off. First of all, I wanna welcome everyone here tonight. Thank everyone for coming out. We're gonna kick things off real quick with a brief public safety report from our Los Angeles County Sheriff Department. We've got a couple of housekeeping items we're gonna take care of, and we're gonna get to the festivities. It's not gonna be too long. Matty Congresswoman, good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. First, I'd like to express my congratulations to Mayor Paulan Miles, Councilmember Kearney, and Councilmember Suarez, and City Clerk Harbison for your reelections. Congratulations. And I have your public safety report for December fifth through the nineteenth of this year. On December sixteenth at approximately nineteen thirty hours, a strong-arm robbery occurred near the one seven one hundred block of Hawthorne Boulevard in the city of Lawndale. The subject fled the location with the victim's property. The subject was located a short time later and detained for robbery at South LA Station, and the subject was not a Lawndale resident. Additionally, on December seventeenth at approximately oh two hundred hours, Deputy Lupins observed a suspicious male inside a vehicle parked in the one five six hundred block of Condon Avenue. Deputy Lupins contacted the occupant and learned the vehicle had been reported stolen. After a stolen vehicle investigation, the male was arrested for taking a vehicle without the owner's consent and booked at the South Los Angeles Station, and the suspect was not a Lawndale resident. Additionally, the motor deputy Rodriguez conducted traffic enforcement on many surface streets, including Hawthorne Boulevard, Prairie Avenue, Inglewood Avenue, and one hundred and forty-seventh Street, and he issued approximately fifty citations for numerous traffic violations. There were going to calls and observations. There were approximately three hundred and three calls for service and three hundred and eight observations by the deputies in the city of Lawndale for a total of six hundred and eleven calls. That concludes my report, and if you have any questions, I'd love to entertain them.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the report? Thank you, sir, for that report. Okay, the next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is-
Mayor?
Yes?
I think we have fire here.
Well, we don't have him on the agenda tonight.
I don't see him.
Yeah, alright. Next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this point. If you would line up by the flag, when it becomes your turn, just walk up to the podium. If you would start with your name first, and then proceed with your comments. In about two and a half minutes, the ambulance will come on. They give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Are there any wishing to speak on the oral communications? You don't have to wait for your name. Just simply, when it becomes your turn, come to the podium.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lucy Milivojevic. I'm a Realtor with EXP Realty, and I'm here on behalf of the homeowners of forty-six twenty-seven West One Seventy-third Street. And I wrote something so I can be very concise and to the point. So I'm a Realtor representing the Weber family on the sale of their home. Family has asked me to speak on their behalf because of their poor health and emotional impact of the situation. Homeowners Stan and Marina Weber are here in the back with their two daughters, and also the buyer is here, Joshua Standifer. The reason why we are here today is to ask for a just outcome of granting of a variance. The Weber family purchased a home in nineteen eighty-two as a four-bedroom, two-bath home and have paid taxes on such for the past forty years. Department Building and Safety Planning Supervisor here, Jared Chavez, instructed code enforcement Williams to violate the property on an addition that was noted by the county assessor's office in nineteen seventy-six. In nineteen seventy-six, it was recorded as a four-bedroom, two-bath, twelve sixty-two square feet. The Webers purchased the home in nineteen eighty-two. Ms. Chavez's instruction is to demo the entire back of the house or permit it. The demo of the home would end up being a two-bedroom, one-bath, under a thousand square feet after forty-five years of being a four-bedroom, two-bath. In two thousand and twelve, the Webers spent approximately two hundred thousand dollars on a remodel that encompassed ten new windows, updating electrical, and the entire house, putting it in a new bathroom, sink, and toilet. This remodel was permitted with numerous inspections by the city and approved and finalized, bringing appeal and value to the property and to the community. Mrs. Chavez is now requiring the homeowner to demolish what the city has approved or permitted, costing a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. In addition, throughout the years, there have been multiple tenant violations that were corrected and inspected and finalized. Ms. Chavez would not only not give us an opportunity to explain, she stood fast in her decision-making, and our option was to either demo or permit. In my presence, Department Building Safety member Nolan Maya tried to make a suggestion regarding the situation to Ms. Chavez. She again stated, "I make the decisions," and quickly silenced Mr. Nolan. I made a request via email to meet Ms. Chavez, and she didn't respond. After emails to city council, mayor, and city attorney, Department Building Safety asking for assistance, Ms. Jared Chavez emailed me with the same options, demo or permit, and wrote, quote, "Just because someone made a mistake in the past and failed to let the property owners know about these unpermitted additions does not mean that staff will make the same mistake twice." The city approved the remodel that encompassed this addition they claim is unpermitted. Ms. Chavez called someone's mistake in the past of not violating this addition. Was the mistake in nineteen seventy-six when the assessor's office corrected, recorded with square footage? Was the mistake in nineteen eighty-two when the home was purchased and cleared?
Go ahead and start wrapping it up for me.
Okay, very good.
Yes, ma'am.
Was the mistake in twenty twelve permitted, during the permitted remodel, also approved by the city? We're asking for a variance to grant grandfather in this square footage that has been in effect now for forty-six years. And the new buyer has taken great actions to purchase this home and decided to build a life here in this family, make a family here. We have emails, letters, county assessors, documents, receipts for your review if you need them. We would hope to get a meeting with the city attorney and city manager, the mayor, to review all of the supporting documents. Thank you for your time and consideration. There's so much more I could have said, but I'll leave it at that. Please grant this family what's just. We're grateful for your adhering to the city's mission statement and wish you all a happy holiday. And I would invite Josh to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Josh Standifer. I'm a longtime resident of Lawndale. As a renter, and I'm trying to become a homeowner. Briefly, I come from the wrong side of the railroad tracks. I grew up in a household that was riddled with alcoholism, abuse, trauma. I got sent to the first place when they didn't know where to keep me when I was twelve years old for a year. And when I was eighteen or nineteen years old, men and human strangers spent time to give me a chance and grant me clemency, teach me how to be a man. I've been cleaning sober for nineteen years now. I am a staple member of my community, and I'm trying to buy this house. And two minutes to midnight, all this stuff went down. I've spent the last fifteen years saving every penny I have, and I have about just enough to make sure I can slap paint on the place after we get it. And about two weeks ago, after we were open to sixty-day escrow, we started hearing about all this other stuff. And I know that I am an example of clemency and grace and the kindness of strangers. And I would beg of you, on Christmas especially, that the councilmembers here try to exercise some of that clemency to make our lives, the degraded health of the former owners who have degenerated as a result of this ongoing battle with the city. If you could make a chance for me and my family to start here, I would be so grateful. And all the facts as stated are quite evident that they bought it that way. The city has violated it, some might say with a weather eye, over and over and over again, clearing those violations. And nine times out of ten of all the contractors I've spoken to, a variance would be granted. And I'm just asking if you could maybe grant it so I don't have to try to spend all that money that I don't have fixing something that was already approved and paid for in two thousand and twelve. Merry Christmas. God bless you.
God bless you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. That's our next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Lawndale City Councilmembers. My name is Holly Osborne. I'm your neighbor across the street in Redondo Beach. And about a month ago, I started looking very intently at those diagrams that Metro had provided on those charts for the open house, and I noticed a glaring discrepancy. At One Hundred and Seventieth Street, where the width has always been seventy-five feet, I measured it in two thousand and eighteen, you know, with a yardstick over and over, came out to seventy-five feet. I measured it recently. I got the same thing, and then I got more sophisticated with the tape measure and two people on each end. It's seventy-five feet right at One Hundred and Seventieth, or two feet in, because the wall curves. All of a sudden, if you look in Metro's diagrams, it's eighty-two feet. Where did that eighty-two feet come from? That six, eighty-one feet. Where did that six extra feet come from? Now, you've seen the diagrams. You could pull them up. If you can't, I emailed them this afternoon to Sean Moore. But I maintain there's only two possibilities. Either Metro doesn't have enough room, and all of a sudden, it's going to take six more feet from your residences, which I don't think they will like, or they're just incompetent and don't know how to measure, which is really surprising because they knew how to measure back in two thousand and eighteen. And I'm a retired engineer, okay, and nothing infuriates me more than supposedly competent people making mistakes with numbers. In my career, that made rockets crash or something like that. And here, it just, I don't see how you can give any credence to Metro's measurements. And if they can't even reconcile six feet, how are you gonna trust them to dig down and find the pipelines, okay? So, I hope you all know what I'm talking about. As I said, I emailed two of the diagrams to Mr. Moore, and they're also on the website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jay Gould, you guys all know who I am. I'm coming to complain about the metro. I talked to Mark, and you know how Mark is. He lies straight out to you. I told him, "We need a wall here. We need a sound wall." And he said ninety percent of Lawndale's citizens on the voting when we had those meetings wanted it to go down in the residential area. Ninety percent. I want, I think we're a republic. Can't we have a vote on that with all Lawndale citizens, not the Teamsters that come in to say the stuff? Can't we do something about that? You know what? When my grandson is outside watching them have sex on the tracks right there all the time, that's sickening. That's sickening, and they don't care. You know what? It should, it should go down Crenshaw, but that's beside the point. I've lived here since nineteen forty-six. My parents have lived here. I've lived there. I have not run from Lawndale. Even Robert Paulan Miles says, "You've got plenty of money. Why don't you go to somewhere else, man?" And I am not leaving this city. I am not leaving this city. This is my city, and you guys are not helping. Why ain't you doing something? Make a law now that we have to have a twenty-foot wall there if they're gonna bring it next to me. I don't wanna have people looking in from a train and looking at my wife and then come back and raping them later. The crime around here is crazy. I don't need it. You guys might, I, I, I come here, I've been to every one of the metro meetings for twenty-two years now, and I have stand at the ballot boxes where they said they didn't want it here. Have your attorney do something. My attorney's already drawing up something. You pay this guy for something. Do something. Have the walls already called, and you've got the federal government, you've got the railroad track there. Have the railroad track do it too, because you have to go against the feds too. You got them both. Now you got the train going five times a day now, the tracks. What is that all about? And I know you guys know me. I have taken care of kids in this city. For twenty-two years, I had basketball tournaments at my house for kids. I have done everything for this city. I didn't go on vacation for thirty years so those kids could have a basketball tournament at my house, and it was on TV and everything. I'm just asking for some help here, just a little bit, just a little bit. If you need money, tell me. I'll give you the damn money. But I need something to happen.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. I wanna thank everyone who provided comments. Let's bring it up to Dais for any questions, comments from the council. Let's start with Councilman Pat Kearney.
Okay, I wanna thank the two ladies, the two gentlemen that spoke. What can we do about the property on One Seventy-third? You know, I'm in the Christmas spirit. It happens once a year, but I think we should sign off on a variance for this people. I know in the past, I have close friends, Michael Padre, his mother built a house and built a house over top of it, and they got a variance. So I think maybe this council should look at it and maybe okay the variance. That's just my thought. Second one on the metro, I think we're still waiting for the EIR, but Jay, I'm on board with you. If they said ninety percent of the residents at that meeting, there was only twelve people there. And ten of them were from Redondo Beach, so that's two people. I was there with you. He's my new neighbor. So I'm also on board. You know, I don't know, maybe the metro subcommittee can speak on it, but are we still waiting for the EIR, right, in early twenty twenty-three? But I think that's some of the mitigations we have. Wall, sound wall, twenty-foot. And I agree with Jay about the fence and looking over the fence, and we have, you know, some homeless hanging out there. But with that, I'll pass it on. Maybe Mr. Moore can answer, or the mayor, Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman can answer about what's happening with the metro. And with that, I'll pass it on.
Councilwoman Suarez.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. Thank you. And for those that spoke, I'll start with the house. I do agree with Pat. I think in this instance, we do have a lot of renters in our city, and I think that we should make every attempt to try and get more homeownership going. And I think, you know, if there's something that we can do, I'd like for us to be updated as well and try and get these new homeowner in and let the old homeowners, you know, well on their way. So I would also like to take a look at that and what we can do. And with regards to metro, as Councilmember Kearney mentioned, the draft EIR is going to be coming out. And also, I did wanna state internally, we are looking at what Lawndale's options are. You know, they're not, we're still, you know, looking at every attempt, maybe even legal, at what we can do in order to get the best outcome for our residents. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman Cuevas.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. I do agree with the other two councilmembers to see if we could assist the new homeowners of One Seventy-third, especially if they approved in the four-bedroom, and then they remodeled in two thousand and twelve, and we didn't do anything about it. So if we could approve a variance, that would be my way of thinking or going. With regards to metro, I do wanna see something from them as far as sound barrier or they need to work with us and maybe do another survey with our residents, not include Redondo. And if we could set up another meeting with them for the entire community at our community center, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman. She has all the answers. Here they come.
Okay, first, on the resident. On that variance, Sean, what do we have to do to look to see what options do we have for that homeowner? And what does the council have to do in order to get some information about that?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We'll, staff will work with the property owners, and we'll get back to you and update you on the next steps for the property owner. We have provided information related to making it into a junior Adu, an Adu, or reducing the size of it so they can get under the fifty percent rule or other options. We'll sit down with the property owners, and we'll report back to the council.
Thank you. On the next issue on metro, the mayor and I did just attend another meeting with them, and they don't care for me either, Jay. Just so you know, I'm a thorn in their side. We're told shortly after the first of the year, within the first two months, we are going to be getting the EIR. Councilmember Cuevas asked several weeks ago that, because Lawndale, over and over and over again, says, "We want a meeting." I want a meeting where our residents can hold a mic, ask a question, and the authority from metro answer the question. So far, they're ignoring me on that. They're not wanting to give me that. They're wanting the next meeting to be about the EIR. They're wanting to have an open house ahead of time for one hour, and then two hours of a public hearing in which you could get up and voice your concern. But again, no response from metro. So, as a city, we are looking at exactly what you're asking for. We are looking to see if there are legal options that we can go on that matter, all right? You, you are in the same vein of thinking as I am on metro. I would choose not to have metro go through Lawndale, period. I don't, I don't like either route, all right? Lawndale doesn't need it. It doesn't help Lawndale. It actually harms Lawndale. So I'm there with you. I have been successful in getting them to hear us on your request, Surlee, to have Saturday meetings. My fear is, like you just mentioned, and I voice this to Metro, so I'll say it publicly, is that non-Lawndale residents will be filling up those two Saturday meetings that I have gotten them to commit to because they're on Saturday, and they will be held at Lawndale High, which is a bigger location than losing our High's auditorium, I'm told. But again, my fear is, like you say, I want the time for Lawndale residents, and they won't commit to not putting it out through everybody. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
A quick question. When they do that, they should have a login so we could count how many Lawndale residents attended that meeting? And it should not be just the affected residents. It should be citywide.
So in the meeting again, we, I also brought up the fact, because they're wanting to do a mailer to all residents in Lawndale to let you know of the meetings coming up. There's going to be one in the middle of the week, and there will be two on Saturdays supposedly in Lawndale. Since when metro puts out the flyers or the mailers, nobody seems to get them in Lawndale. I have asked that the city of Lawndale also put out that same information to every address in the city of Lawndale and to every owner of a resident in the city of Lawndale, because that's how the last time we had results was when Lawndale did it, with the letter from the city manager and the information of the event. And metro assured me that they had to also put it out to cover their end of the legality of it. And I said to them, "That didn't matter. The city needed to put it out as well."
Thank you for those comments. And I'll just follow up on the metro. The meeting that we are speaking of is actually gonna be a hearing, and so that's gonna be a very important meeting because it's a hearing. And so the comments that the residents may like to make will actually be on the record. And they will have to address those comments when the environmental impact report is issued. What's gonna be issued in the next couple of months is the draft environmental impact report, and how they're gonna mitigate all the adverse effects the light rail may have on the city of Lawndale. But the important part, of course, is to have your voices heard. There's gonna be a court reporter there that will be able to take your public comments. It's gonna be part of the record. So this is different from a meeting where you just, you know, simply voice your opinion, which we have done for the past twenty years or what have you. You wanna be on record so that they have to address your concerns in those environmental documents when they come out. So that's a very important element of that meeting that's gonna happen, of those meetings I should say that's gonna happen. Going back to the house that we spoke of on One Seventy-third, I'm interested in taking a look at that as well. It may not necessarily be a variance. As we know, those who've been on the planning commission, a variance is an actual process in that the city council can't just simply deny a variance or grant a variance. There's a whole procedure that goes into a variance, and whether or not a variance is actually granted. But what we can do is what the city manager spoke of, is try to think of creative ways to make it happen, right? And so we certainly would do that, because we certainly wanna aid the homeowners as much as possible. We definitely, we're looking to it. But I wanna thank you for bringing this to our attention, and welcome to Lawndale. Absolutely. Metro, we talked about Doug Gould. You brought up the wall. That's one of the things that should be, and of course, he's gonna make those comments, going back to metro, and then when we look at the environmental impact report. So we should fully analyze that as well as one of the sound mitigation measures. With that, I think that's all I- Um, with that, I think that's all I had, right? Yep, I think we pretty much covered it. At this point, I want to send out a couple of shots out. Y'all looking all serious out there? Y'all looking all serious. We're going to send out a couple of shots out, as we always do to, um, elected officials, um, um, in the audience. We're welcomed today by our esteemed member of the House of Representatives, the Honorable Congresswoman Maxine Waters. And by the way, this is in, in no, um, order. Um, Margaret Evans from Inglewood School District is with us. Rod Wright, Senator Rod Wright is with us. Assemblywoman Tina McKenna is with us. Sandy Suarez, former school board member is with us. Mark Warnick from La Mida is in the House. Emma Sharif, the mayor, is in the House from Compton. Bonnie Cardano from a school board is in the House. David Patterson, Hawthorne, is in the House. Okay, we got a couple more shots out, coming out a little later.
Mayor, you forgot Kathy Burns.
No, we haven't forgot Kathy Burns, I just said it, we got a couple more shots out a little later. Kathy Burns is in the House, ladies and gentlemen, stand up Kathy. You, you trying to make me do all the shots out at one time? She's a school board member. All right, right, we appreciate, she, she, she like to give instructions. School board member, all right.
And a teacher?
Oh, and a t- see, double, double, there we go, double trouble. Okay, so we finished all communications, we did comments from the council, we sent out a couple of shots out. We got about two other quick housekeeping items. Item number F is, uh, well, letter F is a consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent?
If this is done, it is affection, I make a motion to go to stack representation.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion is made that we accept the consent calendar, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none. Do you want to read this, um, city attorney, um, after or before?
Let's read it after, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's read it after, okay. Okay, will the council please vote on the consent calendar?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Take it away. Thank you, sir, in order for these ordinances to be, uh, fully compliant with California law, we now have to read them by title. First, we have ordinance number 1195-22, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, amending certain sections in Title 17 zoning of the Longdale Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units. Second, we have ordinance number 1194-22, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, amending section eight point twelve point one two oh of chapter eight point twelve fireworks of Title Eight, health and safety of the Longdale Municipal Code to increase penalties for violations of the chapter. Thank you, sir, these, uh, this work is now done.
Thank you, sir. Couple more shout outs. Ladies and gentlemen, we have joining us tonight is, uh, my wife Lena, First Lady Lena Pullen, along with our along with our three daughters. You can wave. Also, my mother-in-law has joined us, and my sister-in-law has joined us as well. Thank you for being here. All right. Next item on the agenda, item nine under administration, Longdale, City of Longdale general election results declaration. Let's hear from the city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, thank you. Yvette Hall, Assistant City Clerk. This report is to, is to provide you with the official general municipal election results. On November eighth, 2022, the city conducted its general municipal election for the offices of mayor, one seat, city council member, two seats, and city clerk, one seat. For mayor, there were two candidates, Robert Pullen Miles and Warren Dale Jackson. For city council member, there were five candidates, Dan Reed, Samuel Cruz, Wanza Tolliver, Bernadette Lourdes Suarez, and Pat Kearney. For city clerk, there was one candidate, Erica Harbison. The canvas of the election returns is complete, and the results are as follows. Robert Pullen Miles was elected mayor for the full term of two years, and Bernadette Lourdes Suarez and Pat Kearney were elected as members of the city council for, for the full term of four years. And Erica Harbison was elected as city clerk for, for the full term of four years. Staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number CC-2212-056, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November eighth, 2022. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you for that report, Madam City Clerk. Item number ten, installation of elected officials, the newly elected members of Longdale City Council and City Clerk.
Do you have to vote on that?
We got, well, we vote on. We got a vote on that?
Adopt the resolution.
It won't be official if we don't, right?
Yes.
I want it to be official, right? I don't want it to be up there all rogue, right? Let's, let's do that, what, what is the pleasure of this item?
I'll, I'll motion to adopt resolution CC-2212-056.
Okay, the motion's been made by Cuevas.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman-Gorman, is there any discussion on the motion? Would the council please vote?
For item number nine, the motion passes unanimously.
Burley. Okay, next item on the agenda. It's the installation of elected officials, the newly elected members of the city council and city clerk will take the oath of office allegiance and be seated. Well, we already seated, but but whatever your program is, let's, let's get it underway.
Re-seated.
Okay. Let us know how you want to do this, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and council members, Yvette Hall, Assistant City Clerk. At this time, we will, we will begin the oath of office. We will start with the mayor and ask that his daughter, Shaday, come, please come to the podium, thank you. And the mayor as well.
Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for, for Shaday Pullen.
Hello, everyone, hope you guys are having a good night. Um, now, this remarkable woman really needs no introduction. This congresswoman is one of the most powerful women in today's American politics. From making history as the first woman and first African-American Chair of the House of Financial Services Committee, to being a member of the Congressional Democratic Party, her advocacy for women, children, people of color, and under deserved communities have been truly remarkable. So remarkable, she was just nominated and overwhelmingly elected in the seventeenth term in Congress with over seventy-seven percent of the vote. Throughout her more than forty years of public service, her strong legislative skills and outspokenness for underprivileged communities has taken this country by storm. This amazing congresswoman represents a large part of South Los Angeles and the South Bay in the greatest possible way. I know I feel so lucky and honored to have this woman representing my city and my family. Now, to administer the oath of office to my dad, Mayor Pullen Miles, it's my honor to welcome the U.S. Representative of California's Forty-third Congressional District, the Honorable Congresswoman Maxine Waters.
What's the, what's the program? You might ever tell the mayor the program. You just show up.
Is your wife coming out?
All the girls, all the girls?
Thank you for the wonderful introduction, that was so sweet.
This is how we get it.
Will you please raise your right hand? Please repeat after me. I, and please say your full name.
Robert E. Pullen Miles.
Do solemnly swear that I that I will report and defend
That I will report and defend.
the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution
of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
I made it through that one. I almost forgot the words, right after she said the words. I am, I am fifty-five.
Okay, we got to sign something.
Sure, yeah, let me open it up right here.
I guess we'll redo that.
The congresswoman has the good handwriting. Look at that. The exec- oh, yeah, they did.
You know, you can go through here if you want to. Look, you can go through here.
This is only a second mortgage.
Right, Ari? Vladimir, how are you?
Yeah, good, good, he's, he's good. Thank you. Okay, now we got to take the picture.
Ladies and gentlemen, your mayor.
Thank you. My pleasure, thank you. All right. Since we're making this up as we go, at least I am. I just want to thank, um, our congresswoman for being here with us tonight. You know, this really means a lo- a lot, um, to me for you to come out, although we see you all the time. All the time, you're talking about busy, putting in a lot of work in her district. We see you a lot, all the time, but we don't take it for granted that we have one of the hardest working members of Congress representing our city. And I appreciate that. We appreciate you being here, I appreciate our friends, our families for being here tonight, and all the elected officials, because they're our colleagues, right? They're not just, you know, elected officials, they're our colleagues. Um, a lot of us kind of, as we, as we call it, grew up in this thing, right? You know, um, as staffers or what have you, right? And so, we just really appreciate you spending your, your time. And I also want to thank, you know, most importantly, um, obviously my family for, you know, having a, a family, um, support, you know, my immediate family, my wife and my daughters and my in-laws. That's really important, you know, our families, and having a strong, uh, family connection, so I want to thank them for being here. I know, um, when you're nineteen and twenty-two, you got places to go, right? You know, not so much fourteen, but when you're nineteen and twenty-two, you really have places to go and people to see. So, I really want to appreciate them for being here, um, tonight. But I want to thank the residents of Longdale. I want to thank, yes, absolutely. I want to thank the residents for going with me, um, on this journey. A small-town boy from Oklahoma City, now a bona fide Californian, right? When I go home, they say, "Oh, yeah, you, 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 big time, you, you could Cal-" not because I'm the mayor, because I live in California. Yeah, because you live in California, right? That's, that's, that's different, right? And so, I really have enjoyed representing, um, the residents and the stakeholders in Longdale. People ask me all the time, they say, um, "Do you like, uh, being mayor?", and I tell them, "Yes, I love it." You can't be afraid to tell people that you are passionate about something that you love. Because when people find that you're passionate about it, what you do, they get behind you, because they want to see you succeed. We all have dreams and goals, and when we tell people our dreams and goals, and, and people know that, that we're not just doing it for our sake, but we're doing it to better the community, people can get behind that. They can get behind that, so, don't be afraid to say you love what you do. You do it because you love it, right? And so, I'm just, um, counted all joy, um, to, to be here, to represent for two more years the wonderful city of Longdale, the heart of the South Bay. Thank you very much. And I'll be seated.
Okay, and next will be Councilmember Suarez. Will Councilmember Warnick please come to the podium, and Councilmember Suarez, thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody, it's my pla- honor and privilege to do this tonight. This is the first time I've ever done this, so, um, I've been on the other side, but to do this, this is truly an honor. And if I could just say one thing about our congresswoman, Maxine Waters, we're the other L-city in the South Bay, La Mida, that has, has been represented by the congresswoman- We're the other L-city in the South Bay, La Mida, that has been represented by the Congresswoman for the last, well, last eight, nine, ten years. Ten years. Unfortunately for us, we're gonna be losing her. I know, it's sad. Because, like our mayor said, she is everywhere. She's in La Mida, she has, one of her favorite stores is in La Mida. And she's, like I said, she's everywhere. And to have that representation, you don't see that very often in Congresswomen or Congressmen. And so, it's truly an honor to call you friend, and I'm gonna tell you, we are gonna miss you in La Mida. Kudos to you, 'cause you get to keep her. All right, so we're gonna do the oath here, and like I said, it's my honor to do the oath of office to my good friend Bernadette Suarez, who truly is a true leader here in Landale, and a young leader and passionate leader. So, if I could have you repeat after me. I state the name.
I, Bernadette Suarez.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Without any mental
Reservation
Reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will then and that I well and faithfully discharge the duties
And that I well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
You are sworn in. Ladies and gentlemen, your new and improved and awesome Councilmember Bernadette Suarez.
If I may have you sign this top line?
Sure.
Thank you.
And Mark has to go, he's a very busy man, so.
If you could sign right here on the top.
Sure.
And this is your title. We can fill it in for you, you can write.
Yeah.
Okay, one more time.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that's okay. No worries, you're welcome. Councilmember, you could sign here. Thank you.
Okay, going off the cuff, following in the mayor's lead, just wanna thank everybody that came out. Mark's leaving, but I asked Mark to swear me in, because he's really great, for those of you that know him, at building relationships. He was just sworn in as the president of the South Bay Association of Chambers of Commerce. And so, I think that that's something that would be really helpful for our community, is looking at reviving ours and bringing in new businesses and whatnot. But overall, a great guy, and so that's why I selected him to swear me in this evening. Just wanna thank also everybody that came out, all of the electeds. It's a really tough job, it is, but it's a very rewarding job. And as the mayor mentioned, most of all, thank you to the residents for supporting this council. And I can only hope that they like the direction that we're going in. And so, you know, for the next four years, we're really gonna make sure we have work cut out for us, but, you know, we do it for the community that we love. And I did wanna give a shout-out to my parents, who are sitting right here in the corner. She's probably not gonna like me mentioning this, but my mom was a school board member for the Sentinel Valley Union High School District at the time that I was in high school. And she is, for me, one of my inspirations. And so, I always look to her. And then, of course, my dad, you know, not a lot of people talk to my dad as much, but he's just, he raised ten kids. And so, I'm number six, but, you know, you don't, it takes a lot to be able to care for, you know, ten kids. And he grew up in Landale. His parents moved to Landale back before it was incorporated. And so, I, you know, we just love this city so much. And so, I just wanna say thank you. Thank you to everybody that came out.
When she gets finished.
Okay, I wanna bring to your attention, ladies and gentlemen, joining us from the city of Carson, which is one of the cities I first got my political start in, the honorable and my good friend, he can't hide, he's standing right there. Councilmember Cedric Hicks.
All right, next will be Councilmember Kearney. Will his daughter Tabitha and granddaughter Sarah please come to the podium? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am very honored that my dad asked me to do this, even though he knows I hate public speaking more than anything in the world. And I'm blessed to call him my dad. Are you ready? I state your name.
I, Erica Kearney.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Let me think about that mental reservation.
That went out a long time ago.
Okay.
Okay.
Say it again.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
And purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties
And I will and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to, pardon? Which I'm about to enter.
Ladies and gentlemen, Congress I can't. City Councilman Kearney. I told you guys I hate public speaking.
Let me make a note. Speech, I don't have, I'm like Robert, I'm wrong.
We have a couple things to sign.
We have to sign first, yeah, so I can get out of this.
And forge my name. You stay right at me.
Perfect, thank you. And if I may have you sign?
Thank you. Okay, I have a few words. I like Robert and Bernadette, and my kid mine's short. I wanna introduce my wife, Cecilia. Come on up here. Come up here. My daughter Tabitha and my granddaughter Sarah. Three generations of Landale. When I moved here in fifty-six, that's nineteen. Okay, not eighteen. Started a life in Landale. I never thought I'd be up in a city council position. I was on the other side of the fence, another side of the law. I was running from the law as a gang member. But you know, we all grow up. And I wanna thank everybody that came out tonight. Maxine, always a pleasure to see you. And for the people that voted for me, thank you. And for the ones that didn't vote for me, thank you. At least you got out and voted. And I wanna thank you, everybody, and thank you to my daughter, my granddaughter, and my wife. Thank you.
Yes. And next will be City Clerk Harbison. She's going to join me at the podium. Thank you. I'm going to give City Clerk Harbison the oath. Thank you for the honor. Okay, if you could please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Erica Harbison.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
That upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
As the appointed city clerk, I did not prepare the elected city clerk to make a speech, so I apologize to myself and to all of you. And thank you all for voting, thank you for coming out tonight. I look forward to settling into this position even more and to follow in the footsteps of the great people behind me on the podium and here and in the audience, and mostly the great people here, my family, my husband Matthew, and my daughter Sasha. Thank you all so very much.
That concludes our oaths. Thank you.
We're almost done. One or two more housekeeping items. Give us three minutes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the annual reorganizing of the city council. Okay, hold on. Yeah, let's do that one first. Item eleven, this is when we reorganize the city council and we select a person to serve as the mayor pro temp for the following year. For the year, I mean, I should say.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Councilwoman Cuevas to the next mayor pro temp seat.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made that we appoint Cuevas as the mayor pro temp by Kearney and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
You don't ask me to give her a chance to speak. Way to go, way to volunteer.
For item number eleven, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for volunteering, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the city's representatives to intergovernmental agencies and boards. We have a list of boards and agencies. I'm gonna ask the council if they express anything different. I will make a note on the, before we actually mention the agency, for the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, by adding Bernadette Suarez as one of the alternate delegates to that board. So it would be Robert Pullen Miles as the delegate, and alternates would be Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman and Bernadette Suarez on that board. So that would be the order for that one. Unless there's anything, any additional ones. Seeing none, we would keep the rest as the same. And that would be the California Contract Cities Association Board of Directors. The delegates shall be Pat Kearney, alternate Pullen Miles, and Hoffman-Gorman. Sentinel Youth Services Board. Well, we haven't caught up with the new rules yet, but we'll, that's fine. Bernadette Suarez will continue to be the delegate for that board. County Sanitation District, number five of Los Angeles County. Delegate Robert Pullen Miles, alternate Pat Kearney. League of California Cities, Los Angeles County Division, Shirley Cuevas as the delegate. Oh, wait a minute. Anybody wanna be the alternate? Okay, Robert Pullen Miles as the alternate. I was trying to get out of that one. You notice they were silent on it, right? Okay. Three more. Los Angeles County City Selection Committee, this is automatically the mayor as the delegate, but we can't appoint an alternate. If anyone's interested in being an alternate.
I'll be alternate, Robert.
Okay. Mr. Pat Kearney as the alternate. Next one is the South Bay Council of Governments Board of Directors. Bernadette Suarez is the current delegate. She will continue to be the delegate with the alternates Shirley Cuevas and Robert Pullen Miles. And the last is the Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly. The delegates will remain the same. Bernadette Suarez and alternate Pat Kearney. All right. And that would be the order. How should we adopt it? Mr. City Attorney, do we need to have a motion on all of those? That's the resolution? Okay, so let's have a motion to adopt the resolution and fill those names in as mentioned.
So, so moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made that we adopt the resolution, CC 2212-060, regarding the appointments for inter-agency governmental agencies. Will the council please vote?
For item number twelve, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Okay. Next on our agenda, there's no city manager's report today. Let's hear from the council before we wrap it up. Let's hear from Councilman Pat Kearney, if you have anything tonight.
I have a list, so, you know, I'm gonna defer to the first meeting in January. I'll bring this back so we can get this party started.
Very good.
I'll do the same.
Cuevas, you wanna take their time?
To the next meeting.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hafman-Gorman.
I would just like to tell everybody, happy, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, remember in Landale, we don't want to shoot off fireworks for New Years, the illegal kind, um, they're not legal, but everybody have a great set of holidays ahead of us.
Absolutely, I too want to wish everyone happy holidays and safe holidays, and we will see you back, God willing, and the creek don't rise next year, right? This meeting is, is now seven forty-seven, this meeting is adjourned.